Good evening, everyone. It's about 5:35, so we'll get started. My name is Josephine Iancua, and I'll be facilitating tonight's town hall with support from a few of my colleagues who will be introducing themselves tonight. Tonight is the fourth of five town halls for the Russell City Reparative Justice Project, focused specifically on finalizing proposals for reparative justice recommendations. So we're going to discuss two topics tonight. The first will be business grants and economic development priority, followed by home buyers assistance programs. As we get started, if you could please just select a language channel. We are simultaneously hosting this meeting in Spanish. At the bottom of your screen, you'll see a globe above interpretation, and you can select either English or Spanish as to suit your needs. I'm going to invite our colleague Luisa up to make this announcement in Spanish.
Buenas tardes a todos. Ofrecemos esta presentación en español. Por favor, elijan el lenguaje que quieran escuchar la presentación. Hay un globo de interpretación. Ahí pueden escoger español para escuchar en español. Gracias.
Thank you so much, Luisa. And then again, if you have not done so already, please select your language channel towards the bottom of the screen. Okay, so welcome. Thank you so much for your time. We have about two hours of discussion planned, and this town hall is really intended to get your feedback on two proposals that will be submitted to city council this fall to be decided on this winter. So just before we get started, I wanted to give you an agenda. We'll start with the opening remarks and project background, which we're beginning now. There will be an introductory poll for the attendees. So currently, we have about 20 people joining us. So that poll will give us a sense of who's in the Zoom room. We will go into the first discussion topic. So spending about an hour and five minutes first on business grants and economic development priority as it relates to the Russell City Reparative Justice Project, followed by about 50 minutes of conversation on home buyers assistance programs. Throughout the event, we will have different polling opportunities and silent reflection opportunities. For that reason, we do strongly encourage that you join on your own device, but completely understand if people are meeting as a group and sharing a device. At the closing, we'll give you some announcements about the next steps before having a final poll. And that poll is meant to get a sense of what this group thinks is a priority for who would be eligible for the two proposals. So what we'll do is, throughout the course of the conversation, take note about what you're saying about who should be eligible, and at the end, do a ranking poll based on the options that you provide. I'm so very much responsive to your feedback. So I want to pause with that to bring up our team to do introductions so you know who's in the room with you. I will start us off with our assistant city manager, Regina Youngblood.
Thank you, Josephine. Sorry about that. Had a little bit of a technical difficulty. Good evening. I am Regina Youngblood, one of the two assistant city managers with the City of Hayward. Happy to be here this evening, supporting this very important work. Thank you.
Maybe Tim, then Rosalinda?
Hi, my name is Tim Loons. I'm an analyst from the IT department here to help support the Zoom event tonight.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rosalinda Romero. I am the analyst here. We'll be helping facilitate public comment. I'm glad to be here.
Good evening. My name is Luisa Carrera, and I am your Spanish interpreter.
Thank you so much, team, and I appreciate all the time and support. And as I mentioned, my name is Josephine Iancua, and I serve as the Equity and Inclusion Officer for City of Hayward. Okay. So that is the team that you will see in the room to ground us in who's facilitating and who will be around to coordinate with you, answer questions and all that. We now want to go into community agreements for the space. And we understand that we are meeting virtually, and it's important and all convenings to have some agreements. So first and foremost, there is a zero tolerance for racism, hate, or disrespect. We ask that you have understanding of the emotional labor being act of the community, especially those that have experienced harm as it relates to the Russell City redevelopment projects. As a part of the participation, we ask that you step up, step back. We have, like I said, around 20 people present currently. So there's plenty of time for everyone to be heard. This space is really meant to help collect feedback, but also start to identify priorities within that. So we're basing our analysis on what you say, and we do want to hear from everyone. You may not want to speak verbally. You can also send your feedback in writing, and I'll talk a bit about how we're doing that, both in the meeting through polls and then after the meeting through a public comment process. If you're calling in, we do ask that you identify yourself when making public comment, or if you're on Zoom and your name is not shown. If you could identify yourself when making public comment, please have compassion and respect for one another. As a part of the meeting, you are agreeing to being recorded and having your feedback included in our analysis. So these recordings are on YouTube in perpetuity, at least as it stands now. They'll be on the project website as well. As far as the feedback that's spoken and written, we're not going to tie any names to the feedback. There will be a grouping of themes. So what we'll do is kind of focus on how many times the same things or different things are said to prioritize what gets put in a draft proposal that goes to the public for input, as well as to prioritize a workshop in the winter to advise council on community input in this process before they make a determination on the recommendations. And then finally, if you have any issues or have questions, you can email the project email, which is russellcity-rjp@hayward-ca.gov. So it's a friendly reminder the meeting is being recorded, and thank you so much again for being here. So I will start with the project background for those who may be unfamiliar to the origin story. Back in 2021 in November, Hayward City Council voted unanimously to do a resolution to apologize to a series of racialized groups, Black folks, Indigenous folks, Latinx folks, other people of color for the City of Hayward's role in either implicit or explicit institutional racism. Following that during a strategic roadmap session, city council directed staff to work with survivors or former residents of Russell City, as well as their descendants, to think through what appropriate restitution looked like and to engage the community through a community-led process. So that was the origin of what became pretty much a two-year process of engaging a large group of folks from outreach to start to identify descendants and former residents to the creation of an elected steering committee to a workshop that happened back in March. So in March of this year, Hayward City Council received 26 draft recommendations, as well as about six addendums from steering committee members. So the draft recommendations represented a series of input from the community, as well as addendums that further specified some priority areas for members of the steering committee. And following that session or during the session, council directed staff to narrow down that list a bit to really reduce the duplication of some of the specific recommendations, to get categories of what is being proposed, to also expand community inputs and to give a series of options that have a scale, either bigger or larger ways of implementing what is being proposed. So that is the process that we are in right now. So the 26 recommendations were consolidated to 10 topics. We've discussed six so far in the first three town halls. Today, we'll discuss the seventh and the eighth. As I mentioned, business grants and economic development priority is one bucket. So really thinking about economic vitality and repairing the harm of destroying, you know, booming economic culture that was in Russell City. And then also, the second one is around home buyers assistance, and that ties more to some of the feedback to date which you'll see, which speaks to comprehensive approaches to housing, giving where peoples, you know, resided and their living space was disrupted. So the implementation proposals that go to council this fall will be based on feedback to date, but also really refined in this process. So we do not want community members to feel like past feedback has been in vain. It has not. It's been used to establish where we are now, and we want to get more specific as advised by both the steering committee of former residents and descendants and the elected officials currently in office. And the implementation proposals will again be advised by not only this meeting, but it's a public comment process. So there are other opportunities for those who are not here physically tonight to weigh in through written feedback. So our goals tonight are to collect community feedback to inform the development of the reparative justice implementation proposals. As I started to mention earlier, we're doing a qualitative data analysis on feedback to identify priorities coming from this community-led process. So that means that based on either comments that you write or comments that you say, we will group various themes around who should be eligible, around what we should be doing and how we should be doing it to give city council some ideas of what they should be considering. So your feedback can be submitted in many ways, including in the... We really recommend the polls because that's where we're grouping key sections of your feedback. But if there are technical issues or other difficulties, you can write information in the chat, and we will be able to flag that and include it in the summary of feedback. So as I mentioned, there are two proposals. You'll see them on the screen. We'll start with the business grants and economic development priority, followed by home buyers assistance. And like I already said, we'll be discussing the what and the why in terms of what are we describing and why do we think it's important? How? So that can be specific goals and objectives, and then the who, eligibility criteria. And then to the extent that you have ideas or feedback, you're welcome to comment on verification protocols to ensure that people are eligible for potential benefits. So this is just a summary of what the template outline looks like. If you have done any of the public comment surveys from the first four proposals, this will look familiar. Basically, we break down the different sections of what I just shared on the last slide. And these questions are really just prompts for you to consider what type of feedback could be helpful. So the more specific detail we have from you, the more we can put something forward that is not generic and that's truly reflective of what community members feels is reparative. So these questions are different variations of them. We'll be on the slides as we get to public comment. You also should have received an email which outlined a what-to-expect document where you can see a draft of this proposal template. Okay, so that's a few more logistics before we get into conversation. Like I mentioned, it's best for one person to use one device, if at all possible, because there will be various polls. There's also a raffle that will enter you into if you're interested. And in order to have the best experience, it would be great to be on your own device. You currently are not able to mute and unmute, but you will be able to raise your hand and speak as we get to the public comment portions of the meeting. And my colleague Rosalinda will give you more details about that, but we're limiting public comments to up to two comments per topic. So when you have public comment, you'll have a full two minutes of time to express your comment. You can also have a second comment within that topic. And then when we get to the second topic, you have two more opportunities to give your feedback in addition to any written feedback. And again, you can chat with staff throughout the town hall. We see that folks are already doing that. So we will be in touch with you in the chat to coordinate any technical assistance needs. So we are now going to enter into the first poll of the evening. Before we do, I just want to give a quick preview of what to expect. So right now, we have about 26 people on the line. We do try to give everyone enough time to submit responses so we have an adequate summary of the feedback we heard. So we can only share what we hear. So for the 26 of you on the poll, we want to know who's in the room. So you'll see a three-part poll. One asking which group best represents you, and you can be multiple. For example, you could be a student and a former resident. We also ask how many people are viewing with you. That helps us understand the scale of the feedback if folks are sharing a device, and then also what language you're listening to as we are providing real-time Spanish interpretation services. So please complete all three parts of the survey, and we'll convene after you finish that. Thank you. So a total of 21 people responded, about 80%. We'll give it a few seconds. Ms. Harris, you do have permission to unmute yourself now if you want to raise your question?
Can you hear me? Man, I don't know how to unmute this. You have this stuff at the bottom.
Oh, yes, ma'am. We can hear you.
Okay. I could only do the first part. The other questions didn't come up. The how many people are viewing and are you listening today by Zoom? And I tried to go on the chat. I can't type anything in there, so I don't know what's going on.
Okay, do you mind just telling us, Ms. Harris, if you're the only person on your device?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we can make a note then, and that's added to our mute. So thank you so much for that. And then let us know if you have any other technical issues.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, so we can end the poll now, and maybe we can just share the results for our attendees to get a sense of who's there. So you should see it, I think, now. Oh, wait, sorry. Let me share results. Okay. So it looks like all of our 21 respondents of the 25 here are listening in English. There is a mix of attendees here with nine of the 21, 43% being descendants, eight of the 21, 38% being former residents. Again, those are not mutually exclusive, so some of those could be the same people. Eight people that identify as Hayward residents, one as a Cal State East Bay students, and one as other. And then the majority of respondents, 13 of those who responded, are listening solo with at least one person sharing a device with another person. So thank you all for taking the introductory poll so we know who is in the room. So now we'll proceed with getting into the first discussion topic. So again, that's around business grants and economic development priority. I will start by saying that is a very broad range of possibility. And there are... I know some members of our steering committee that are here. There are other community members who may have been involved in conversations, but you all may recall a wide range of perspectives on what that can mean. So this is really the opportunity to further refine what is being recommended to council so that staff are accurately reflecting your priorities. But first, let's reflect on what we've heard so far. So starting from that list of 26 recommendations that were shared during the March 2024 work session, the first one you'll see is thinking about grants for entrepreneurship and those being extended to descendants, regardless of their location. And then also thinking about pipeline opportunities for existing businesses in the industrial area. So it was a two-part recommendation, with that first part really speaking to the idea of business grants and supporting entrepreneurship for descendants in this case. You could, you know, expand on that. For example, if you wanted to say residents as well. For infrastructure development, this is a kind of... I would say this is one of the recommendations that probably pairs nicely with other ideas, like, for example, the idea of returning land. So it speaks to the fact that there needs to be modern amenities and services to support residents of today and descendants. So it's really speaking to community benefit programs in the context of infrastructure development and what that could mean for business grants or the prioritized economic development work. And then another spoke to a similar kind of theme, thinking about restitution for the denied infrastructure of the actual Russell City community, so prior to the destruction in the 60s. So thinking specifically about services as not just like the water or the fire coming, but the comprehensive services that a public system may provide to underrepresent people. So that could be a lot of different things, but thinking about what does that mean in terms of business grants or developing the economy of the City of Hayward? So then additionally, there were addendums from steering committee members. So this kind of speaks to some of... A little bit of the overlap, but also people said things differently. So some of the related addendum items that are connected to this theme are return to land, if not provide alternate city-owned land for Russell City business owners and descendants. Another was a recommendation and more kind of speaking to, I think, values as well, centering an understanding of redlining and how that impacted not only the Russell City redevelopment project, but the options for people moving afterwards. So in particular, looking at the impact of restrictive covenants and housing for business... Housing, sorry, and also business options, in particular for Black people and other marginalized folks. So looking at this expanded, complex impact of a removal of a community that was more of a safe haven for several cultures and an understanding that there might be varying levels of impact when it comes to what that meant for being able to restart a business. Another recommendation said that business owners, business owner residents, so residents who own businesses as well and their descendants should be provided with an opportunity to have funding or compensation to restore, repair, and repay their losses. So the potential of financial gain being the kind of main harm to be thinking about. Another recommendation is to give resources to create or restart businesses. That can be a pathway to growing and recreating generational wealth. And then finally, on this slide, you'll see reclaimed city-owned land for displaced businesses and organizations with partial funding from tax and fee monies generated with the goal of kind of focusing on the fiscal impact of the current-day land that would have been Russell City and what the city's potential to generate revenue could mean for supporting and funding businesses. Okay, so we're almost to public comment. This is just a preview to the slide that you all have seen earlier. So it's a reminder that there is a framework that we're working with. You're free to share your feedback however you want. It's your time. We do want to hear from you. It's just to give you some guidance on questions that you may consider to further specify or refine your answer. So these will be segments of it on the actual slides itself. But before we go into public comment, we do want to take a good amount of time for some silent reflection. So in the past, there was a two-part survey. This is taken together about 15, maybe 18 minutes. So we'll first ask you to think about, very briefly, who should be eligible for this potential benefit that we're going to further define as a group in the conversation. So we'll ask you to share in two words or less who should be eligible. And then if you have a second group, you can add that afterwards. Please note, there's another question for you to expand upon this idea in the next poll. This is just to get a sense of what will be included in the ranking survey at the very end. So if we were to summarize with the 27 attendees online currently of the 27 folks here tonight, if we wanted to showcase who you all think should be eligible, we have a succinct way of visualizing that in addition to the more detailed narrative. So you should have a two-part question. You don't have to do the second question if you don't have a second group. But please, if you have more than one, use the two different sections. And we will launch the eligibility poll for business grants and economic development priority now. Okay, so we have about 21 of the 27 attendees participating. So we'll go ahead and end the poll there. Thank you so much for your time. Again, you can expand on this more with the next poll, and I will preview that now. So the next poll will give you a two-part question where there's a lot more detail for you to expand upon who should be eligible and why you think that, as well as what should be proposed in the context of a business grants and economic development priority proposal. So these are some questions for you to consider. I will leave this up on the screen if it's helpful, and we will launch our next poll down, which will be your opportunity to expand on your feedback. Again, following this, we will open public comment. So this is just as valuable as speaking for two minutes. So we'll give you some time. Typically, it's taken about 10 minutes for people to complete the surveys, and I'll give you some time checks as we get closer. We have about 19 of the 30 attendees participating. So we're at about 63%. I'll give it about 40 more seconds in case there's any last comments before we transition into public comment. All right. Thank you to everyone who completed the poll. I saw one more come in. So we have about 20... Oh, there's 20. Okay. I'll give it a couple of seconds. About three more people. We had 22 people currently after being at 19. So we will go ahead and close the poll now. And if for some reason you were not able to submit your answers, please feel free to copy your information in the chat. It's generally what do you think should be proposed? How should it be implemented? And then finally, who should be eligible? So any notes on that for those who did not get a chance to submit their polls? All right. So next, we are going to move into public comment for proposal number seven. And for this, I would like to bring up my colleague Rosalinda Romero, who will be facilitating public comment and giving you some more logistical information. Thank you, Rosalinda.
All right, good evening, everyone. As we enter public comment, there are some things that we have to consider. We want to thank you for participating in the public comment period. Please use the raise hand function to be added to the speaker's list and wait until you're called on. I will call upon you to unmute yourself, and a prompt should pop up on your screen to unmute yourself. And each caller will have two minutes to respond to the prompt. If you are joining by phone and would like to speak, please press pound or star nine to raise your hand and star nine to lower it when you're finished. I will call the last three digits of your telephone number. And to unmute yourself, you will press star six. And to unmute yourself again when you're finished speaking, you will use star six again. So here is the prompt that we want to focus our public comment on. The what is how would you describe the action, the project, and/or service being proposed? The how, is it a one-time action or ongoing? If it's ongoing, for how long? And how should eligibility be verified? The why is why is it helpful or justified? And who should be eligible for the proposed benefit? So if you're interested in commenting, please raise your hand. Use the raise hand function, or if you're joining by phone, you can press star nine. And we will call upon those who are wishing to participate. Please remember, you have two minutes for the one comment. And if you'd like to make a comment again on the same, on the same proposal, you will have another chance to do a second comment. Comments are limited to two comments per person at two minutes each time. Anybody wishing to speak, you can raise your hand during this time and I will call upon you and unmute you. Okay, Deborah, I'm gonna allow you to talk right now. But please follow the prompt to unmute yourself.
I keep seeing the dates nineteen sixty-three to nineteen sixty-eight. Wasn't everyone gone by, by that time? I don't think there was anyone in Russell City then. And that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, Deborah. I will meet you right now. Thank you for participating. Anybody else willing to speak? Connie, I will, I will allow you to talk right now. And Marion, you're up next.
Yeah, my question too is the, that timeline. You know, the redevelopment discussion started in, in the fifties. And you know, the writing was on the wall for these people. The conditions were lousy and they couldn't do anything about it, so they left. So you know, my concern is they still pay taxes until they, you know, my family got their settlement in the redevelopment agency in nineteen sixty-three. So you know, they left in the fifties, mid-fifties. So that's my question. Do they have to, they have to reside there? You know, they, they were there from the twenties to the fifties. So I really don't know how much it takes. But I don't think these folks are being considered. And that, that is my problem with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Marion, you are, I'm gonna allow you to talk. Please follow the prompt to unmute yourself.
Thank you. Speaking to the question posed for businesses, families should receive grants for the ability to restart the businesses that they lost. Because there were many businesses that were there to the very end. A lot of families that were still living there to the very end that would, should be considered in terms of receiving grants, receiving loans, receiving tax breaks, receiving properties in a city of Hayward where they can have a brick and mortar at discounted prices and receiving tax breaks as well for businesses to restart. So eligibility would be residents and descendants of residents. Length of time for at least as much time as it's taking for us to have these conversations. Sixty years or more. More because, as I said, they were living there in the forties, fifties, and sixties at a disadvantage. So they, that should be a consideration as well. And, and most importantly, it should not be stricken from the record just because it took place in nineteen sixty-three with that particular rep, the redevelopment agency, I believe it is. I think that's about it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Marion. Is anybody else willing to speak? Please use the raise hand function and I will call on you. Give it if, if anybody else willing to speak? We'll give it about one to two more minutes. And then we can close public comment if there isn't any. If you do not wish to speak at this time, please remember there's an opportunity to email after the meeting or submit your comments after the fact if something comes to mind afterwards. And city staff might be able to respond if you have individual questions in the chat. Okay, I'll just give it about one more minute. Then we can close public comment. Okay, we don't see any more hands raised. Thank you for those who participated. And we'll be closing public comment. Thank you, Josephine.
Thank you, Rosalinda, and thank you to those who shared their feedback. We'll continue on to talking about home buyers assistance programs. And again, I just want to really encourage you all to share your feedback in any way that makes it comfortable for you. We really want to make sure that proposals that go to council are informed by your feedbacks. I'm hearing some thoughts around potentially expanding years of consideration for when people may have been impacted. So those who left before the, the redevelopment project years and those, I think those years come from the county's redevelopment project. And then also hearing a lot of ideas, I'm thinking about how to support brick and mortar space, tax breaks, land usage for businesses as well. So thank you for those who shared comments and we look forward to seeing what was written because we know we had about, I think, twenty-two or twenty-three people send stuff in writing. So now we'll shift gears to talk about home buyers assistance for the remaining of the public comment input. So again, going back to that list of recommendations where there were twenty-six, there was one that really was connected to this. And this is speaking more broadly about housing. But it talks about having, for example, a housing preference policy and emphasizing affordable housing for descendants who are affected by the redevelopment. And it also calls out people who are currently experiencing homelessness. So this again is a part of the bigger conversation around the idea of a comprehensive housing package, understanding that different former residents and different descendants may have different housing needs at this time. In addition, there were some addendums which had comments that spoke to home buyers assistance. So one noted that there should be an elevation of a reparative justice approach that centers the impact of the land grab. So really thinking about the long-term impacts of losing land and the government actually gaining land and how those have had long-term effects on wealth and well-being of Russell City residents and descendants. So they called out specifically property and business owners as a part of that bigger bucket of descendants and residents. And again, this is a similar comment. You probably saw for the last one, but centering an understanding of redlining. So redlining affected how Russell City came to be in the first place. It affected what people were able to do after they were forced to move as well. So specifically looking at the impacts in Black and other marginalized communities that had limited business owning or home owning options after being displaced from Russell City. So they kind of speak more to the values to guide the proposal. And there's opportunities to further specify what exactly the community wants to be proposed. So just a few notes for consideration. Alameda County does have a down payment assistance program. So they have down payment assistance through, you know, various income levels to support first-time home buyers and also to help purchase or helping first-time home buyers and also purchasing homes in the county. There also are several other homeowner programs for things like capital improvements, someone's land. Within the city of Hayward, and so currently the city of Hayward does not have a home or down payment assistance program. Hayward City Council did allocate two million dollars of what is called ARPA funds, the American Rescue Plan Act. And that's already allocated to down payment assistance. So this program has requirements that, you know, mandate compliance to federal restrictions and requirements. And it will likely be implemented next year in twenty twenty-five. So the idea or the projection is that this program could provide down payment assistance support to nine, or sorry, nine loans to low-income families. So a smaller number, I mean, you think about the total number of folks in Russell City, but just some other context for consideration when thinking about if this proposal should be something that is duplicating, something that already exists, or something that supplements or is completely different from what already exists. So that's pretty much all we've had from the conversation. So again, we really are relying on your feedback to inform the proposals. We can only make them as detailed as we hear. So it's an opportunity to clarify what the priorities are and why you feel this is reparative for what happened to Russell City. This is the same template. We can maybe share this template in the chat for everyone. There's a what-to-expect document which has general Zoom access information. But if you scroll down, you'll see this template. So if you do want to follow along to get a sense of what it looks like when it gets to the public comment survey, you can look in the chat for that link. Otherwise, we'll go right into having our silent polls before public comment. So the same routine, we'll first start with very short survey responses on who should be eligible for this before more expansive narrative reflection. So we'll share a survey now with two parts. And again, we'll ask in very short words, two words, or even one, who you think should be eligible as far as potential groups of people? And if you have a second or third group, please add it in the second part of the survey. So we will go ahead and launch that survey now and leave it open for a few minutes. There's about thirty-one attendees currently, so I'll try to get to at least seventy percent completion before we move on. So there are twenty-two responses so far, but thirty-one people here, we're just at seventy percent. So please take about one and a half minutes more to complete your answers if you want to send feedback before we close the poll. It will take about thirty more seconds. We have about seventy-seven percent participation of the thirty-one attendees, so that's great. Just want to make sure if there's anyone finishing up, they have a chance to submit their feedback. All right. It looks like we have all the responses we're gonna get for this one. There's twenty-four out of thirty-one people. So we will go ahead and end the poll. Thank you for your feedback. And we also want to give you some short reflection time to think in detail about the what itself. So the specifics of the description and the objectives. Again, really considering if there are other programs that do things like down payers, down payment assistance for first-time home buyers or renovation assistance. What might this proposal look like, especially considering the current scale and the current reach and eligibility for those programs? So we will launch a second survey where you have a chance to weigh in on all that. So the more detail, the better. So if you want to, you know, write what, this is my what, this is my description, that's great. Or you can just reflect openly and we'll sort through your notes. But we'll give you time now, maybe about ten minutes to complete this next survey. And so I'll check in in about seven minutes to see how we're doing on time and responses. And I'll give you some time updates before we close the poll. Thank you. But that's a quick time check. It's been about six minutes and we have thirteen responses of the twenty-seven attendees. So we'll give you about maybe three more minutes. And at six forty-five, we'll continue to public comment. So please take the next three minutes to make sure you get your answers submitted. Thank you. All right, everyone. We have twenty responses of the twenty-eight attendees on currently. So that's just about seventy-one percent. So if there are no more responses, we will end the poll. Oh, I see twenty-one. So we're gonna end the poll in a few seconds, so please feel free to submit your answers if you have not done so already. And again, if you have not completed the information and have some written feedback, please feel free to use the chat. Okay, so we're going to close the poll at twenty-one of the twenty-eight attendees, which is seventy-five percent, a pretty good response, right? Oh, twenty-two. So we have seventy-eight percent responding. And thank you to everyone for getting that feedback in. So, um, this is now the time for a public comment specific to home buyers assistance. So again, this is your opportunity to share in more detail what you think should be considered when it comes to what specifically is being proposed, who specifically is for, or how it might be implemented. And following this, there will be a final opportunity by commenting on public comment. But it's important to note that when we open public comment for draft proposals, it's based on the community feedback. So we can only be as specific as the information we're receiving and encourage you to share your thoughts. So with that, I'm going to bring my colleague, Rosalinda, back up and she'll be facilitating you all for public comment around home buyers assistance.
All right. Thank you, everyone, again, for participating in the public comment period. Please remember to use the raise hand function to be added to the speakers list and wait until, and wait until you're called on. I will call upon you to unmute yourself and the prompt should show up on the screen. Each caller has two minutes to respond to the prompt. Just remember, you can make a maximum of two comments per proposal. There is a two-minute time limit per comment. Staff will alert you when time is up. If you are on, joining us on the phone, you will press star six to unmute and press star nine to raise your hand. I will call upon the last three digits of your phone number. And remember, public comment is the focus, which is different than questions and answers or community discussion. So if you would like to join us in public comment today, please use the raise hats function and I will call upon you. As we're waiting for people to participate, just to remember the what, the how, and the why, and the who. So what, how would you describe the action, the project, or the service being proposed? How is it a one-time action or ongoing? If it's ongoing, for how long? How should eligibility be verified? The why, so why is it helpful or justified? And the who, who should be eligible for a proposed benefit? So if anybody's wishing to comment today? Oh, I see one hand being raised. Tony, when? I will ask to unmute you right now. And it's Ben Pryor. You're up next.
Hi, I just have a question because this kind of feels like it's for first-time home buyers. And you're talking to people that are elderly, that already own homes and are not looking to rebuy or have another home. So how would this affect anyone that's a senior that already has their own property right now? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Tony. It's Ben. I'm gonna allow you to talk.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. I just wanted to comment that the home buyer's assistant should be in the form of financial aid for like down payment and closing cost assistance. And also, there should be consideration for those who are already homeowners to possibly have home renovations or have financial assistance for home renovations or upgrades to their property that or upgrades to their property that that they currently own. And I think that it should be like an ongoing process to allow all former residents, descendants, property owners, or business owners to be able to participate in. And I think it will be helpful and justified to help recreate the generational wealth that was stolen from many members of the community. One of the members of the community at that time were forcibly removed from their homes, property, and from the community at large. And yeah, that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up, we have Roe Aguilar.
Yes, good evening. I am directing my response mostly to those descendants and perhaps former residents who do not have homes right now but who are still interested in purchasing a home. And I think that the homebuyer's assistance should take the form of affordable inclusionary housing, which is affordable housing, that a percentage of affordable housing. It would require Hayward to build a percentage of affordable housing, low-income housing, in every market rate development over a certain number. And that would be available for Russell City residents and their descendants to purchase and get them into the home-owning area, arena, where they can build generational wealth if they haven't already done so. So I think that this program would speak to now and the future for any resident or descendant that lost their property during eminent domain proceeding. And not only that, but by being in a market rate development, it would provide them access to all of the resources and schools and services that so many of these market rate developments have access to, whereas sometimes, most times, low-income developments don't. So this will be an opportunity for them to regain at least a portion of what was lost during the eminent domain proceeding. Thank you.
Thank you, Roe. Marion, you're up next, and then Dora.
Uh, thank you. I think anyone should be eligible for, any one of the Russell City residents and their descendants should be eligible for any offering of pay, payment, down payment assistance. And I think, again, I don't think the language of first-time homebuyer should apply to any of these because many people lost their homes and what managed to, by the grace of God, to move ahead and purchase property. I think they should be, there should be some way to compensate them for the down payments that they have already paid after losing their homes to buy another home. They should be given an opportunity to build wealth, there are things like ADUs that they could put on their property that could give them additional income so that they can work through retirement that way. And so that if they are gone, their children will still have, you know, income coming from their property that they were fortunate enough to be able to purchase after being kicked out of Russell City. I think that grants, loans, tax breaks, property tax breaks, things of that nature should be considered for this particular piece. What else? It doesn't matter where the property is, it shouldn't matter where the property is, as long as they're purchasing property. Doesn't matter if it's a multi-unit apartment complex or whatever it is, they should be able to, to go for it in order to, you know, catch up on the generational wealth that was lost because of what is taking place. Condos, anything like that. Ah, I think that's it for me.
Alright, thank you, Marion. Before I move on, I saw Dora and Gwen with their hands up. If you would like to speak, please place your hands up again and I can unmute you. Um, I don't see you guys' hands up again. Okay, I'll go on, Michael Johnson, I saw your hand up, would you like to speak still? You put your hand up again, I can, I can unmute you. Okay, I'm gonna move on to, if you'd like to speak, just remember that you can place your hands up. I will call in Rafiq next. You should be able to unmute yourself. Rafiq, you do have permission to talk right now, you should be able to unmute yourself. Seems like we might have a little bit of technical difficulties, let me try this again so you can unmute yourself. Oh, there you are, let's see. And then Rafiq, you should be able to follow the prompt to unmute yourself. I will call upon you in a few more minutes to see if we can try to unmute you again, alright? Michael, I'm gonna allow you to talk, and then Dora, I'm gonna allow you to talk as well. Next. Michael, you're up.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Sometimes, if you, because sometimes you saw it, sometimes you didn't, I mean, it showed, I don't know. But as reference to the, this is a reference to the projects for the education, home assistance buyer, right? Home assistance. I mean, that's for if you want to buy a place in Hayward? Or should it be, because like, that means you have to leave, you have to leave from wherever you're at to go to Hayward and get a place, but if you live somewhere else, but you're still part of this whole thing, you should get assistance wherever you want to buy a house. Because that's saying that I gotta leave from, you know, Antioch, Rock, and go all, and move to Hayward. Should I have to move to Hayward? Hayward ran me up, ran my grandparents up out of there. You understand what I'm saying? I don't know, but you're not, this is just to make a statement because you guys aren't really responding, right? Hello?
Yeah, this is a reminder that we are just a public comment period and we're not responding to questions right this time, we're just, yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure, but my thing is like, uh, if you are a descendant, right, proven descendant, then you should be able to be given homeowners assistance where you want to live. Not have to come all the way to Hayward to live. Now, there's people that live in Hayward now, okay, that's fine. But if you don't live in Hayward, I shouldn't, I shouldn't have to get assistance to go all the way to Hayward to live. This place is much cheaper than Hayward that I could live at. If you, if you're somebody that's looking to buy a home, and you shouldn't have to be a first-time homebuyer either. That first-time homebuyer thing, no. I mean, I ain't, there's nothing against that. But it should not be, you have, as well part of the criteria to qualify for homeless assistance should not be where you have to be a first-time homebuyer. No. That can be one of them, but that should not be the main criteria. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, Dora, I'm gonna allow you to talk, please follow the prompt.
I've been thinking that my family left Hayward, put out of Hayward in the sixties, right? And someone has property that belonged to my family and built on it. And that, what I'm interested in is not aid for schools, aid for buying the house. I got all that. What I want is money compensation. So how do you, how, how do you figure we're gonna get it? Please answer.
No, no, she's not, this is just for you to state.
Okay.
She's not gonna answer the
Okay.
But you, you're stating your, what, how you, you know.
Yeah, that's my feeling on, on the issue. On the homeowners issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Dora. So I see Marion Johnson raising her hand again. I'm gonna mute you, and then Rafiq, we're gonna try one more time after Marion speaks. So Marion, I'm gonna unmute you, please follow the prompt.
I'm so sorry, I didn't take my hand down.
Oh.
Let's just say the other thing that, that should be considered is the amount of down payment assistance. You would typically need to pay twenty percent in order not to pay home equity insurance, which is tacked on to the end of your monthly payment. So the percentage should be around twenty percent for assistance, and I believe, like Michael just said, that, you know, it should, you shouldn't have to worry about where, just as long as you're buying a property. It shouldn't, you shouldn't be, the control shouldn't be there for them to demand that you purchase something where they want you to, we've already been been controlled by the government and whoever. And I think we should have, we have a voice and we are very, you know, able to, you know, find our own spaces where we feel safe. And I think that's it for me, but I'll take my hand down, sorry about that.
Thank you, Marion. Okay, Rafiq, I'm gonna allow you to talk, please follow the prompt. There should be a prompt, Rafiq, asking you to unmute yourself. Rafiq, if you're experiencing any technical difficulties, you can let us know in the chat, and then if you want, you can also type your question or your comments out in the chat as well.
And Rosalinda, I do see a chat saying there's some technical issues. Rafiq, I'm wondering if you were able to select your channel as English for the interpretation? That might be a part of it. We can, we can wait maybe a minute or so, because I know you've raised your hand a few times. And if we're not able to resolve your concern, we can take it in writing and state it out for folks during public comment. So if you can just try selecting English under interpretation perhaps, and then seeing if that works, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Rafiq, currently you do have permission to speak right now, so you should be able to unmute yourself. Wait a minute to see if we can get it going on, and if not, you're also welcome again, just a reminder, you can put your comments into the chat as well.
And maybe Rosalinda, this would be a good time, I know we're not going Q and A for a public comment, but I would love to just speak broadly to some of the different feedback that came up, especially around overall priority for the host of recommendations coming forward and some of the questions about specificity. So I'm hearing, for example, Ms. Dora, you spoke about compensation being more of a priority, I think Ms. Tony was speaking about the audience, like how some folks are already homeowners, and they have bought their first home. We heard from Ms. Marion also that for many people who are displaced, that it may not exactly be a fit because there have been homes historically lost due to the redevelopment project. So all that feedback is helpful, we're taking that all in, if you have specific recommendations in light of that, we appreciate it. So we have the ten different topics and ten different proposals happening, that doesn't say that one is a bigger priority over the other. So that prioritization work, we tried to do a bit with guidance from the steering committee back in the spring. And now we're looking at sending a suite of options to council, so if in your public comment you want to further specify priority, you're welcome to do that. We have been focusing more on giving a set of ten different options, but for example, for some of the conversations, we've seen more of a turnout that could be potentially some indication of interest. But this isn't to say that this will be weighted as a more important proposal than the one around fair compensation or around general basic income or around property restoration. It's just that that proposal, the time to give feedback will be in the written public comment survey for those now that their town halls have passed. So that's one thing to consider about priorities, if you want to voice a priority, please do so. And obviously, some proposals may appeal more to some people more than others. And I think, I won't, I don't want to micromanage any of the feedback that you all have in terms of how to get your feedback, but I heard a lot of questions, for example, thinking about the, I guess eligible use or the, where this type of benefit could be used. So we're here to hear from you and to bring proposals forward, something that could be considered, to I think Michael's point and others. When you think within the city of Hayward really only has authority over that jurisdiction as a city. The county of Almena is bigger, other counties like Contra Costa are other entities, so it's fine to propose whatever you think is the most effective for this process, but we can't really determine the extent to which the city of Hayward will have authority to kind of make determinations in other regions as well. So that doesn't mean you limit it, you could say that the homebuyer's assistance that you're proposing is something completely different than the industry standard, but just know that when it comes to the decision-makers as well, they'll be having to kind of make a very out-of-the-box decision, and will likely want to compare what's being proposed to what's already in existence. So that's just some context for both the overall priority and also around, you know, us being flexible with giving us any feedback that you like, so the more we know, the better. And I see there are some hands, I know, I'll turn it back over to Rosalinda for the rest of public comment, thank you.
So we got Rafiq's comment that he asked me to read out loud to the group, so I'm gonna read it right now. He wants to suggest that property tax considerations be provided at Prop thirteen, Sharvis Gann assessments, as we would all have certainly qualified for that. So that was his comment that he wanted to share. I see Marion Johnson, I saw your hand raised again, but we have you at two comments, before I come back to you, I want to do one more call out for any other public comments from the group. Okay, I'm gonna Deborah Harris, I saw your hand come up, did you want me to call on you? Please place your hand up again and I will unmute you. Okay, I'm gonna call on Deborah Harris next, please follow the prompt to unmute yourself.
I might comment on the homeowners by the assistance on that. We have people from Russell City who live all over the United States, so we cannot just say, you know, if they're gonna get any kind of assistance, they have to be in a certain geographical area. So I think that should, you know, be included or just as long as they can prove they lived in Russell City or a descendant, then they have to prove it, and I think that should be sufficient. Because we have some in Flori- Because we have some in Florida, Southern Cal, Oregon, everywhere. So we can't just limit it to people who are local. And that's it.
Thank you for that, Deborah. I see, before I call Marion again, I see Tony, I'm gonna unmute you, just please um follow the prompt to unmute yourself.
And that's a good point that uh Deborah just put up, there are people everywhere, they scattered us everywhere. So it should not be that they live in Hayward, and if they don't, they still should qualify and they should be given. A check for whatever is determined. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Okay, one last call before I have Marion, she can. There's anybody else not willing to speak, we'll have Marion um close this out in public comment. Just give it one last call. Okay, Marion, I'm gonna allow you to unmute yourself, please follow your prompt.
I appreciate it, thank you, I didn't mean to talk last time, but anyway, um I didn't want it to be uh misconstrued. Um I think it should be a bundle of things that is provided for this community. And within the parameters of uh assistance to purchase new property, I think you should broaden that. So that everyone could apply, you know, for the um assistance, so. Someone who already owns a home, just because they were able to to do it, doesn't mean they shouldn't qualify for assistance. For say like um. The um home repair, or putting an ADU in the back to increase the value and and and. Uh allow yourself to create residual income. Um so I'm not opposed to this, I'm just saying, just don't, don't box it so in so much that. It's a first time home buyers program, but there's counseling that should go with that, there's financial counseling, there's taxes that should go with that, so. I just wanted to be clear, I'm not saying it's not a fit, I'm just saying expand what it sounds like. So that more people from the community, wherever they are, Ohio, wherever, that they can apply for. Uh and get uh these kinds of financial assistance, whatever other programs that are out there that they can help. The community that lost every, that's all I'm saying, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Marion, so we're not seeing any more uh public comments, so. We'll give it thirty more seconds, and if not, we will close it for right now.
Okay. Deborah Harris for just a split second. Um Ms. Ms. Harris, did you wanna comment again, and I also see iPhone uh Leonard?
Okay, so uh just to piggyback on that, you know, um. There are all kinds of upgrades that homeowners can have, you know, windows and. Air conditioners or whatever furnaces and all that, so all of that should be included, you know, somehow. As an assistance to them. Any kind of uh electrical or any of that that needs to be upgraded, you know. Or they feel that they need, should be a part of this uh proposal here. And I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. iPhone Leonard, I'm gonna allow you to talk, please follow the prompt.
Good afternoon, fellow Russell City residents. Uh I'd like to say that uh my great grandparents had a nice homestead out there. And I sure wished we would have had the in, the foresight to lift that house up and put it somewhere. Anyways, it was uh it was burned down by my mother. Because it was, she'd rather see her burn the place down than have anybody else do it, however. It's difficult to fathom how a person can get justice out of a situation like this. It's been decades, it's been decades, but it's still, us as a. Third generation residents of Russell City, the descendants of the original pioneers, I would say they deserve something, what? I'm not sure, monetary, without a doubt somehow, somehow monetary. Monetary justice should be, should be uh redeemed to us, maybe perhaps. A prorated value of the property. As as the generations turned and as the the inflation of home values went up in a comparable ratio. That's something to consider. I would think that would help, there's so many of us that have gone to the Lord, now we've passed away, the descendants have passed away and. And they've passed on, so luckily, there's a whole bunch of us that are still existing. My mother was born over there, she's still alive, she's ninety five. And uh she's getting older, she's got a lot of, a lot of paperwork on Russell City to show she was a original descendant. However, as I said, I still believe some sort of a ratio between what the value of our properties were then. And raise it up to what it would be at this current market value. Whether we live in this county or another county, in this state or another state, it's something to consider, that would give us a. Uh a a scale, a sliding scale as to the values that can be adjusted. That's my comments, those are my words, and I return the microphone back to you.
All right, thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? I'll give it thirty seconds. Okay, just as a reminder, if you were to um, if you were thinking something after the meeting and would like to make a comment, you have the ability to submit it. Not only in the chat, but to the email afterwards, after the meeting to for the, during the, during the online public comment period. All right, I'll turn it back over to Josephine, thank you.
Thank you so much, Rosalinda, and thank you all for the very um robust public comments, excuse me. One thing I wanted to just note as we get into our closing remarks and next steps is that um public comment is now open. Um so what I'll do is I'll share a link in the chat, um a few links um where you can go online to. See the current public comments, you can also um go online to get updates and review past recordings. I would just flag some of the ideas that were raised today, they sound, at least on the surface, to overlap a little bit with fair compensation. Uh for lost land or lost property, so there is a proposal specifically around fair compensation. It is currently open for a public comment, if you look in the chat, you should see a link to the portal webpage and um. One of the first things you'll see are links to a survey on stakeholding grants, on fair compensation, on property restoration, and also on affordable housing preference. So um I'll tell you a bit more about public comment in a second, but please know that you can continue to give feedback, especially if you wanna inform those ideas in more detail. Um just as an aside, there is a mapping tool that we'll be launching next month. This is a tool that shows um current day um aerial or air footage of what was Russell City. So you can see the current day parcels overlaid with what we know of the parcels of Russell City. Um it's important to emphasize that this is not a complete record, although there are several hundred records. Available there, and that's an opportunity for folks to be able to see which parcels overlap with. Uh where their family or where they personally lived or own land. Um this will only show the type of document, so it will describe like a tax document, eminent domain document. A deed, um and it will say the names associated with that, it's possible that there can be um multiple names for one property, if there are multiple owners. Either at the same time or um multiple cells and we have. Do not want your family's name mentioned in this, please um inform us, and we do have a link on our portal. That link um for the overall portals in the chat, so you can just click opt out of the GIS tools, what it's called, so. Uh we do wanna make sure that before we go live, if there's anyone who has concerns with uh family information being shared, that can be removed. Um if there are multiple people in the family and one person wants it removed, it will be removed. Um many people have also found it helpful to have a a current day understanding of where that land was, because the parcels. Um and many of the streets have changed. So if you know of others who are not on the call, because right now we have about thirty three people, there could be many others um who. Would benefit from this information, please let them know, uh we know that um there are some community events going on. Where we will continue to do outreach in terms of the public comment survey, but if you know of others who might not know about this mapping tool. Please feel free to let them know, and then also to spread the word in case it's a helpful resource. Um so like I mentioned, public comment is now open for the first of our four um proposals, we'll have. Four more coming in the subsequent weeks, so you can expect in about three to four weeks to see two draft proposals from tonight's conversation. So one around business um development, business vitality, business grants, one around home buyers assistance, um and then there also are two from last week's town hall. Which focus on scholarships or academic grants and um. Um pathway programs like internships or on the job training program, so um what you'll see online. Um let me just go forward, I'll come back to this, you'll see that for the first four topics, um there's opportunities to weigh in. That public comment, we actually extended one more day, so by September eighteenth, that will close. Um and then like I mentioned, the ones from today and from last week, that will be going live in the coming weeks, we'll make an announcement to the entire list of folks who signed up. As well as everyone who joined this uh call tonight, so if you are a first timer here, you will be added to the project um alert list to get updates. Um and we'll let you know when the next four surveys are open for public comment. Um if you are around um for the reunion cookout this weekend, there will be some volunteers from the community doing outreach. Um not um well, some, one staff, but not any staff kind of assigned to this project, it's more community members. Um in an effort to be more responsive to, you know, the vibe of the picnic, so. If you are around or know others who are around, we will have physical copies of the surveys um for the first four. So please do take some time, um similar to tonight, where all your names will be entered into a raffle to um in incentivize. Public input, um we'll do the same thing with those attending um the community gathering this week. And then we'll have one last town hall about a month from now, and that'll be around. Um a series of heritage preservation proposals, so everything from public art to ethnic studies curricula. Um as well as a community center and various community benefit program ideas such as environmental justice programs. Um so we really encourage you to stay involved, we know it's a lot of time and a lot of um information being asked of you. So we just thank you for uh taking that time, um again, um for the next town hall. You have opportunity to weigh in on these two topics, and that will be our final town hall, so. Thank you so much for sticking with us throughout this series, because I know some of you have been to all four to date. Um and we hope that we see you in the winter as well. And then just a forecast with where we're going, um there will be two. Um city council meetings that you can save the date for, we encourage you to start doing that now if you will be in town. Um you can also participate virtually, um there's been slight updates to the type of agenda item, just for those who followed, so November nineteenth will be a work session. Uh for the first conversation, and then December third will be a legislative business item. So they formally it said consent item, we'll make it a legislative business item, and the goal is still to come to some determination. On these ten proposals being brought forward uh based on this community led process. So with that, we are ready to take our last poll of the evening, this will be a little bit uh repetitive. But we want to, now that we've gotten a chance for everyone to hear some of the feedback and to write some of the feedback, wanna give you one final reflection to rank. Um who should be eligible for these two proposals, so there will be two questions, we will launch a poll now, and this will give you an option to um. Rank um the proposal, so sorry, rank who should be eligible, so you can select up to three different. Groups for each proposal if you um so fancy, and we'll leave the poll open for about maybe five minutes before we close out the poll. Okay, so we have about ninety two percent completion with twenty three out of the twenty five people ranking. Feedback on business grants and economic development priorities, so we'll end that before we go into the final poll. But first, we'll just share the results, so you can see them yourself. So you'll see seventy eight per uh percent of respondents said um former residents and descendants should both be eligible for. Any type of business grant or any type of business support. Um fifty two percent, so twelve people said business owners, and five people, twenty two percent said none. With one person saying uh those who are below the poverty line. So thank you for your feedback, and now we will launch our seventh, I believe, and final poll for the evening, this will be a similar type of ranking, but for home buyers assistance, so. You have the options to select up to three groups that you believe should be eligible, and please um go ahead and use the survey to share your feedback now, thank you. Okay, we have about eighty percent completion, so twenty of the twenty five people remaining have completed the survey. Please take about thirty more seconds before we close the poll, if you'd like to give your feedback. Okay, so we'll close the poll at about twenty one respondents, so eighty four percent of participants, thank you all for your feedback. And I want to share the results, so you can take a look, so you'll see that um of the. Um twenty five people attending, we had twenty one respondents, and then the respondent pool of twenty one. Sixteen people said former residents and descendants, that should be eligible, about seventy six percent. Um five people said either no one or anyone harmed, so about twenty four percent, just under a quarter people. And then some other ideas for business owners, black Americans, and low income communities. So thank you all for voting and for participating, so as I mentioned, public comment is open. In the chat, you will see four links to four different surveys, so we really encourage you to take that survey, please only do it one time, we don't want um. To wait one person's uh voice more than others, but we do wanna hear from more voices. Um and if you are around this weekend and you see other community members who maybe are not on these town halls, but might have some ideas. Please do encourage them to take the paper surveys or electronic surveys that will be circulated, and also um. Look out for the public comment survey launching soon. So this time, I just wanna say thank you all so much um for spending the last two hours with us, we know that's a very big portion of your evening. It's during dinnertime and it's some emotionally um labor intensive work, so thank you for your feedback. I also want to express gratitude to the whole team, um so Rosalinda, Luisa, Tim, Regina, thank you all for being here to make sure we can. Be very intentional about getting community feedback. Um and as we close out, I will bring up our um assistant city manager Regina Youngwood, um before we say goodnight.
Uh thank you, Josephine, I also wanna echo Josephine's um gratitude. Thank you, Josephine. I also want to echo Josephine's gratitude for everyone who stayed along with us and who have attended these meetings from the beginning. We appreciate all of your efforts and all of your active engagement. I also want to thank the team, Rosalinda, Tim, Luisa, and Josephine for her leadership.
Okay, thank you, everyone, and we hope to see you next month. Good night.